WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equus and Leader, Member FDIC.
Please rise for the presentation of the colors by the Clark Range Junior ROTC Color Guard. Remain standing for the pledge of the flag by Third District Commissioner Robert Cooper and opening prayer by Brother Johnny Smith, United Wesleyan Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we bow in your son's name. We bow this evening and we thank you for the grace of God that reaches down to the fallen man. We thank you, Lord, tonight for the fact that we can bring these men and women to you and ask, Lord, that you give them wisdom to understand what is going on in our county, the things that needs to be done, the things that needs to be accomplished. And we're praying, Lord, that you would move in a mighty way and as, Lord, as we look across our county, we realize that there's many things that needs to be done. Lord, we think of as we have been in our justice system and seen those that are there, young and old and middle aged, Lord, that are breaking the laws and, Lord, being involved in those kind of things. What breaks our hearts to see that kind of thing in our county. Lord, we realize that we need your intervention there. We need help and leadership and guidance in our churches and our world. And, Lord, we just pray that you would move in a mighty way upon us and help us. Then, Lord, we think of our hospital, Lord, that we need a hospital for those who are in dire need of assistance. And so, Lord, we're bringing that to you as well, that you would give leadership and direction, Lord. And, God, we pray that you would remove the obstacles and, Lord, bring again about the fact that we can have a hospital here that would be assistance to our people. And, Lord, we just pray that for those who, Lord, have lost their jobs in this situation as well, we thank you that most of them have found places to work, but, Lord, we know that their heart is here in Fintress County and, Lord, they love to come back and work with the people that they know and they love. So, Lord, we pray that you would intervene and give us aid and help at this time. We again pray for these men and women as they take charge and work for this county, Lord, that you would just be with them in a mighty way. Help us, Lord, to look to you, the author and finisher of our faith. Help us to look for the God of heaven who can change everything that's around us. Lord, we know this the second hour that you're the one that walked on the water. Lord, you're the one that calmed the sea. Lord, you're the one that took up, oh, Lord, those that were sick and maimed and, Lord, you've healed them. You took the lepers, Lord, and you made them well. And, oh, God, even the dead, not only did you raise them, but, Lord, you raised from the dead. And so, Lord, tonight, we praise you for all that you do and all that you say. Lord, we ask that you would help us to learn the word of God and live it in our hearts and our lives and our homes and our town, we pray. And, Lord, through this, we thank you in Jesus' name and amen.
Mr. Mayor, will you call the roll, please?
Mickey McDonald, here. Justin Miller.
Here.
Rod Williams.
Here.
Kim Douglas.
Here.
Benny Hughes.
Here.
Robert Cooper.
Here.
Lester Gooding.
Here.
Leon Stepp.
Here.
Larry Cooper.
Here.
Wade Matthews.
Here.
All present.
Item number six, approval of the minutes from the July 23 regular meeting and also the August 5 special call meeting. Everyone's had time to look over those, I'm sure. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding to approve the minutes. Do I hear a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Larry Cooper. Roll call, please.
Mickey, four. Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four and none against. Our next item will be for the new notaries. We have one, two, new applications and one renewal. First one is Gina S. Claiborne, new application. Second one is Cassandra Jo Blavens, new application, and Melanie Steplain, a renewal. Do I hear a motion on those three?
Slow motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Justin Miller. Do I hear a second?
My second.
Second by Mr. Leon Stepp. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey, four. Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
The next item is a proclamation honoring the American Heritage Girls. I believe Commissioner Rod Williams is going to read the proclamation and present it to them. Please, y'all, would you ladies please come up?
We're going to present a proclamation in the Board of Fintress County Commission recognizing the Heritage Girl, the American Heritage Girls. Whereas the American Heritage Girls is a Christ-centered character and leadership development program for girls five to 18 years of age. American Heritage Girls is dedicated to the mission of building women of integrity through service of God, family, community, and country. Whereas the Fintress County Local Group, Tennessee 4008, meets at Pine Haven Baptist Church every other Tuesday at 5:15. The meeting starts with a flag ceremony, followed by a Bible devotion, and then unit time, which is devoted to earning badges. The badges cover a wide array from cake decorating, to sewing, to hiking, and camping, astronomy, and engineering, to flag adequate and government. Whereas the main goal of the American Heritage Girls is to install and a desire to serve others and to encourage young ladies in knowing that nothing is too small or too big as long as it is given from the heart. Whereas the American Heritage Girls have raised money for Tennessee Right to Life, picked up garbage and debris in our parks, distributed commodities, volunteered at libraries and churches, and helped with local hope chests. Recently, they helped a local family raise money to go towards their adoption fees. Whereas in 2019, the local troop earned the Presidential Service Award. Whereas in 2019, six American Heritage Girls earned their individual Presidential Service Awards. These awards are based on age and how many service hours were volunteered. Service hours must be given freely to non-family members and they must not receive anything in return other than the feeling of joy from knowing that they have provided a helping hand to others. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this, the 19th day of August 2019, that on behalf of the Fintress County Commission and the Fintress County Executive's Office, we would like to congratulate the American Heritage Girls for their willingness to be involved and active in their community, inspiring others to serve from the heart. Hold on one second. I'd like to recognize each one of them individually that did get the Presidential Service Award. Ms. Chloe Beth Taylor earned the Presidential Service Award. She is the 11-year-old daughter of James and Lori Taylor. She is a member of Pine Haven Baptist Church and she attends Pine Haven School where she is in the seventh grade. Her favorite subject is history and likes making bracelets for her friends in her spare time. She volunteered 102 hours. She helped clean and serve at her church and she volunteered almost daily at their school, at her school library. Ms. Laney Gold, who earned the Bronze Presidential Service Award. She is the 10-year-old daughter of Brady and Mandy Gold, or Brad and Mandy Gold. Laney is a member of the Tunnel Hill Baptist Church and she is in the fifth grade. Her favorite subject is math and she loves horses and baking. She volunteered for 50 hours by helping distribute commodities, volunteered to clean local churches, and helping out at the hope chest. Ms. Andrea Gold earned the Silver Presidential Service Award. She is the 12-year-old daughter of Brad and Mandy Gold. Andrea is a member of the Tunnel Hill Baptist Church and she is in the seventh grade. Her favorite subject is science and she loves to draw. She volunteered for 51 hours by helping distribute commodities, volunteered to clean local churches, and helping out at the hope chest. Ms. Chloe Delk earned the Silver Presidential Service Award. She is the 13-year-old daughter of Scotty and April Delk. She is a member of Mount Zion Baptist Church and she is in the eighth grade. Her favorite subject is history and she loves to play the piano, sew, draw, and participate in 4H activities. She volunteered for 50 hours by helping distribute commodities, volunteering to clean a local church, and helping out at the hope chest. Ms. Abby Frog earned the Silver Presidential Service Award. She is an eight-year-old daughter of Andrew and Ashley Frog. She attends Concord Baptist Church and she is in the third grade. Her favorite subject is math and she enjoys working on the family farm, swimming, and riding her four-wheeler. She volunteered for 24 hours cleaning up our local parks, distributing commodities, and volunteering to clean up a local church. Ms. Ally Frog entered, earned the Silver Presidential Service Award. She is an eight-year-old daughter of Andrew and Ashley Frog. She attends Concord Baptist Church and she is in the third grade. Her favorite subject is also math. She enjoys taking care of her bottle calves, goats, and riding her four-wheeler. She volunteered for 25 hours by cleaning up the local parks, distributing commodities, and volunteering to clean up local churches. Congratulations to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for your service to the county and for the organization that you're involved in. Next, we have a public service update from Roberta White with Vanderbilt Health. Come to the microphone, please, ma'am.
Can y'all hear me? I usually talk pretty loud. You all will be able to hear what I have to say. First of all, I just want to take up about five minutes of your time and I would like to thank you all for allowing me to be a part of your evening. It is going to be a hard act to follow these young ladies who are doing such wonderful work here. But I'm going to tell you all what I'm doing, what I hope to do, tell you a little bit about Vanderbilt Ingram Cancer Center and why we're interested and why I'm here in Fintress County. And I'm just going to start with just kind of reading over what the mission statement is for Vanderbilt Ingram Cancer Center, and that is to alleviate cancer death and suffering through pioneering research, innovative patient center care, and evidence-based prevention, education, and community initiatives. Now, that last part is kind of where I can come in and I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. But Vanderbilt is rated the number one cancer center in Tennessee. We are the forerunner in a lot of research and promising new therapies and it is one of only, it is the only NCI-designated cancer center in the state of Tennessee. Now, again, the reason that I'm here, Vanderbilt has identified 123 counties across the state of Tennessee, the southern part of Kentucky, and the northern part of Alabama where the majority of the patients come from. They have, in this 123-county area, 90% of Vanderbilt Ingram Cancer Center's new patients live in that area, 90% of the patients that they have treated over the past come from that area, and 80% of their clinical trial patients come from that area. So, of course, we're interested in education and kind of decrease in death, cancer death. That's what I'm here for. That's what Vanderbilt's interested in. Our area, when you look at Tennessee as a whole, and again, this 123 counties, there is a higher death rate from all different types of cancers and again, that's why I'm here. And Vanderbilt, of course, has several different locations. I think a lot of you may be familiar with the main campus. They also have, they have a women's center and several other different offsites. And again, hopefully, I think you all are familiar with where Vanderbilt is located. Again, if you have any questions about that, I'm going to stay later to answer any of your questions. But this area, just to tell you a little bit about where we rank, we're fifth highest in the nation for all cancer deaths. We are third highest in head and neck cancers. We are fourth highest in lung cancers. I think probably all of us still know somebody that still smokes and in addition to that, you know, we have issues we're great on in this area. So, you know, those are some issues we want to address. We still have, again, high-risk factors, which includes current smokers. We have a higher-than-average rate of current smokers. We have a higher-than-average rate of obesity and lower physical activity. Our HPV vaccine uptake is less than the national average and just living in a rural area puts us at greater risk from dying from cancers. So, what Vanderbilt is hoping to do and the reason that I am here, we are doing a lot of community initiatives where we're coming out into the community to find out what you think your community needs. And I know recently your hospital was closed and that makes it harder on you guys to get adequate care, you know, with your hospital being closed and adequate care for everything. So, we want to know what you all think. I'm interested in coming out to meetings like this meeting, coming out to your local churches and/or civics groups to do presentations about the different recommendations for cancer screening, some of the local resources that you do have. Again, I have several different presentations and that's what I'm interested in doing, in coming out to your churches, talking to your parent-teacher organizations, anywhere, anytime I'm available. And I did bring several business cards, so if there's some place that you can think of that would like to listen to a presentation on breast or cervical cancer, listen to a presentation on lung cancer, listen to a presentation on clinical trials and the benefits of clinical trials, I'm available to do that. So, that's kind of, you know, there is a group of us, so if you see me out in your community, that's what I'm doing. And again, I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to be a part of this. And does anybody have any questions? I think that pretty much has it. Okay, yes, thank you again for letting me be here and I will be here with some business cards if you can think of something that would be interesting.
Ms. White, thank you very much for coming up here tonight. Anytime we can be of service to you as far as a place, maybe to talk to some folks, whatever you need to do, or a group meeting or whatever, just let us know, we'll see if we can't get it worked into the courtroom with ECD number one. Thank you very much again. Our next item will be a consideration of recommendation from the Fintress County Planning Commission to move a right-of-way easement from Greenwood Drive. Ms. Leslie, for Mr. Joey Ward.
I think that Joey may want to come and present this and then I'll give you the title opinion on it like we did in a previous matter.
Mr. Joey, would you like to come up and explain it here just a little bit on this easement way on the Greenwood Drive?
Jane Ann Campbell.
Jane Ann Campbell, out in West from Winds.
Here is the form that wrote Commissioner Reagan's already signed. He can tell us a little bit about that and then I'll tell you the breakdown on it.
It's at the end of the platte on Greenwood. It's, I consider, as driveway easement to the house.
And I think he's absolutely correct. The platte map shows that it would have allowed access to Lot 38, but when, Lot 37 and Lot 38, but it's really the driveway. Those two had to be combined as one lot because they were essentially the field lines for one lay across the property line for the other. And I have a map here that may explain a little bit better. Justin, if you want to pass that around. How that is, I've looked at the actual warranty deeds. Ms. Campbell owns both of those and I do believe that from the inception of anyone moving in and building on those lots, maybe not when the initial platte was filed, but from the time that they actually had to get permission from Thomas Huff or someone in environmental to come out and build, those two lots have to remain as one and that has then become the driveway for both Lot 37 and 38, which are dated in one deed throughout. So, the title search shows that Ms. Campbell is absolutely correct. That's her driveway. We've not been maintaining it, keeping it up as part of the road, but yet it is still listed, that 111 feet on our road list. Is that a fair statement, Joey?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion from the Commission to remove this from the, remove the right-of-way from the, an easement from Greenwood Drive?
Who wants to claim?
We'll give it to Commissioner Robert Cooper. Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. All in favor, please say aye. Contrary, no. Motion passes. Joey, I think you've got another one right here, don't you, on some consideration of some surplus property from the Fintress County Highway Department?
Can I jump in there and say, Commissioner Reagan, I'm going to need that back for signature?
Road supervisors want to have permission to declare some surplus property and sell some surplus scrap metal and it just includes a lot of old scrap metal covers, just a bunch of stuff you've been digging up against on Joey and some old, just junk you've had laying over there.
Yeah, break drums comes off the truck where we service. Or at parks.
Just a lot of miscellaneous items that he wants to clean up over there and get it out of the way.
Motion to approve.
Hear a motion from Commissioner Justin Cooper? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ouch.
Justin Miller, again. Mickey McDonald, second. Roll call vote, please.
Mickey, four. Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Before I vote, I need to ask Joey a question, please. Does any of this contain any serial numbers?
No, I'm aware of it.
If he does, we need to get those serial numbers and make sure that it's not on our books as everybody's. Four.
We've got, we document with pictures, truck numbers, pictures as we're loading.
Thank you.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four-nine-eight.
Ten-four-nine-eight. Joey, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Appreciate what you're doing. Our next item is consideration of a drainage issue over at the Kirby Johnson T-Ball Field. The needs is to reroute a drain. What it is, they have a covert, Joey, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, they have a covert over there and it comes off of the West Hills Road and it runs through the outfield. And what it is, metal cupboards and over the years they have rusted out and we had a couple of children become a ace of falling in them. Of course, they've been any water flowing through them at times. It got, it's been seriously they fell in them anyway. But what Joey recommends to doing, if the Commission would vote to replace the covert, that he would come over there and do the work on it and bring it out of the outfield and bring it in through the parking lot so it won't have no variance on anything going inside the playing field. And that's what it is, that's what that is there. If Joey wants to say anything about it, that's basically what it is, oh, enjoy. And he'll replace them with plastic cupboards is what he'll do. And I guess we'll buy the cupboards. Can we buy the, can they buy the cupboards through there if they vote to do so? Can they buy them through the highway department, Joey?
Didn't this happen a few years back, too? There was a problem over there.
It's the same thing. And then went back.
I think I've been over there and took some pictures.
Then went back and filled it over and filled it in. It just, what it does when the water, it just, dirt will get in and it's keeping worse it down now.
I move that we redo the project. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Benny Hughes, second by Commissioner Justin Miller. Any discussion?
Yeah, it says it's going to reroute the drainage.
They reroute it through, outside of the outfield through the parking lot area.
Okay, so it's not going on anybody else or anything?
No, it'll run the same way that it's always run down through the woods down through there.
Where's it going to be paid for?
Five thousand nine hundred.
Do you want to pay for it? County buildings, maybe?
I guess if it goes over, then we'll just have to, yes. It's under county buildings. Three thousand dollars, though. It'd be roughly in that ballpark, I believe. It was 300 feet of it and I'll call some of the places in town. Basically, what it comes to around that. Summers might be a little over, a little less, not really for sure, but I don't think, Joey will probably know more about that when time comes. But you can put, I guess you can put it up to so much if you want to, whatever, as long as we get it fixed.
It's going to have to be fixed for it.
It's going to have to be fixed. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Ten-four-nine-eight.
Ten-four-nine against. Item number 12, pass. Joey, thank you so very much.
that's where we've got some money from, was it UCHRA?
No, it was the area agency.
Okay.
Yeah.
To purchase dishwasher, freezer. They paid for it out of that four-ninety-nine, their fundraising line, and this is where the monies came back in and were replacing it for the five-thousand.
Yes, the area agency reimbursed us on that. And I just think that put back in the four-nine-nine.
The thousand dollars was a donation from Metaphyr for Joey for, uh, the nutrition fund. The one-fourty-nine-oh-three is, is what is going, came in through the lockbox that has to be refunded back to the area agency.
And that'll be, that'll be a month-long thing for that.
What's the will of the commission? Hear a motion?
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding.
Just one second. There's some stapled together there. On your second packet that's got one-twenty-eight on the front, it's got two budget, two entries, one thousand, one-fourty-nine. You'll turn over the next page. There's also her monthly budget amendment that will go in. Just want to make sure everybody's seen that.
This is all, this is all, this is both of them.
Over three-five thousand.
This is both budget transfers. The motion was made, made by Commissioner Gooding, seconded by Commissioner Davison. Any more discussion on them?
Did you any, any explanation about that five-thousand?
No, I understand now, yeah.
Roll call vote, please, Marilyn.
Mickey, four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four-nine, yes.
Ten-four-nine against. Thank you, Mrs. Alice, and would like to say that we sent in a, the first month billing, and they got the first month's billing in, and so.
We're getting reimbursement.
We'll be getting reimbursement in September because it takes two months.
Yes.
They'll get, they'll get, they get the billing, then they'll send it into the state, and the state will reimburse, so the first week of September, we should be getting reimbursement on that, and then should follow each month after that, and tenuous, there's just the two months delayed, delayed to get started, time to get it in the paperwork, paperwork and all. Thank you, Alice. Next item is, uh, some budget amendments to the Highway Department. Looks like Joey, you're just decreasing one line there, seventy dollars, and increasing into another, correct?
That's a line item returns for, guys. That's one that they've given me that I was waiting on the budget, the budget to pass before I entered it, and it's in the pile with these others. Y'all don't have to vote on it, it's just a line item returns for them to put money into licenses. You can vote on it if you want out of courtesy.
Let's go ahead and vote on it. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner McDonald. Roll call, please.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four-nine, yes.
Ten-four-nine against. Thank you, Mrs. Alice, and would like to say that we sent in a, the first month billing, and they got the first month's billing in, and so.
We're getting reimbursement.
We'll be getting reimbursement in September because it takes two months.
Yes.
They'll get, they'll get, they get the billing, then they'll send it into the state, and the state will reimburse, so the first week of September, we should be getting reimbursement on that, and then should follow each month after that, and tenuous, there's just the two months delayed, delayed to get started, time to get it in the paperwork, paperwork and all. Thank you, Alice. Next item is, uh, some budget amendments to the Highway Department. Looks like Joey, you're just decreasing one line there, seventy dollars, and increasing into another, correct?
That's a line item returns for, guys. That's one that they've given me that I was waiting on the budget, the budget to pass before I entered it, and it's in the pile with these others. Y'all don't have to vote on it, it's just a line item returns for them to put money into licenses. You can vote on it if you want out of courtesy.
Let's go ahead and vote on it. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner McDonald. Roll call, please.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Four.
Ten-four-nine.
Ten-four-nine against. I'd like to say that the recycle, recycling center, there are insurance companies now, they're taking all the debris away, uh, getting rid of all the metals and scrap and cleaning it off. They have ordered a new building for out there, but it won't be here until probably January. Uh, the insurance company's taking care of that also. Uh, they are still recycling, uh, what they can, paper, metal, and glass and such, but that's the report on that. Does any other business come before tonight?
Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple, three things. I'll be really brief and quick about it. Uh, first of all, I'd like to ask the Highway Department, Joey, how many rickety wood have you took up to the Justice Center that y'all have been cutting and taking up there?
I, I don't think he's got recognition for doing that, but as they clean up roads, they've been taking wood to the Justice Center for them to give out in the winter time. I think you ought to be congratulating for that.
Goodness, that they cut up probably in the last couple of years, and what they've already done is around four hundred rickety woods that they've cut, give to senior citizens, plus what Joey's hauling up there also, so that'll go into this year's, but, uh, and then, uh, it's just a good project, and it looks like a forest up there sometimes, but then in the springtime, it's all gone, so it's just another thing that people working together to get taken care of, and it's going to the senior citizens or someone that can't afford to buy wood.
Uh, one other thing I'd like to bring up and congratulate the commission on a pretty good year last year. We've had a rough year last year, as you know, some things happened that was out of our control, um, but you've done a really good job on the budget. We had some unexpected expenditures. Would like to say we're going to, you know, we, we projected that we were going to be about fifteen thousand dollars to the good last year. With a couple of checks outstanding, we're probably going to finish about a hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars in the black. Like to contribute, a big factor of that, some extra revenue from some departments, but the elected officials done pretty good. They, from what we budgeted, they spent two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars less than what we budgeted. So, I'd like to congratulate the elected officials for doing their fair share to help this commission to try to, to maintain the budget like we did pass. So, congratulations. I think that's well done. One other thing, I talked with John Gunner earlier today. He was going to want to wait till September, but, um, he got a call today, not got the official paperwork yet, won't be till September fifteenth, but Tennessee Department of Agriculture gave him a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars today, just to go towards the provision out there. So, I'd like to congratulate him and, and everybody in the scene that made that possible of his hard work.
He has worked very, very hard to say.
Uh, they gave him some contact, excuse me, some contacts at, uh, USDA.
USDA.
That they think that if he calls them, that they'll give him some money as well. So, it's going to happen.
And I know he's working on a lot of private funding to help out, so.
So, like to thank you, and that's all I've got.
We carried, we carried the, uh, he brought me some prints that he had, a floor plan that he had put together on the building, and we put together some more figures, uh, with some different things, possibly what the estimate could possibly be, because they needed some ground ball figures, not a bid or anything of that type, and we took it Tuesday, we went to the summit meeting, and we hand-delivered it to the, uh, Commissioner of Agriculture, and he was very accepted. Mr. Womack, the assistant commissioner, came up here about three weeks ago, something like that, and we took him on a, some different, we went to about four or five different places, took him out there where it was, and they, he really liked that, and then we delivered it, and so he, uh, they really, that was last Tuesday, Wednesday, last Wednesday, we gave it to him, and so he really, uh, was excited about it, and so now we've got it, and we're going to get it, and we're going to grow with it, and it's going to be, it's going to do us so many things. It has a, uh, the offices will eventually move to the site out there. It's got a seventy-by-seventy open air arena for 4-H, uh, for the children to do displays for their goats, sheep, whatever, they, cattle, whatever they want to promote, their concerts, their contests will be regional and district and all will be held there also, and then there'll be like our offices, four offices, a big meeting room, a big kitchen and such, and then y'all have given them enough land that they will be able to have different plots of, uh, gardens, and it's different type of everything out there, and they'll have a kitchen in it where people can come in and go through classes, how to make your jellies, how to make your canned goods and everything, so it's really, uh, it's going to really be a good thing, and my thanks to the commission for going along with that and, and continuing the effort to, uh, to support them, and it, it's a really big thing, so. But if anyone don't have anything else tonight? Coming up on Saturday, August thirty-first, we're, I'm taking Bluegrass Saturday night on the road, and we're going to be out at the American Legion, and we're going to pay tribute to all of our veterans here in Fentress County, especially World War II veterans. There's just a handful left. I'd like to invite U-County Executive and the County Commission to come be a part of that as we celebrate and honor our veterans, and also some mighty fine Bluegrass picking. I think Lester Gooden, the Cadillac Cowboys, might be out there, so who knows? But y'all are invited, six till ten o'clock, come about five. The O'Bady Community Church is going to fix free hamburgers and hot dogs, just some real good fellowship, good time at the American Legion Post. That's, uh, Saturday, October thirty-first. Come be with us.
What time is it?
October the thirty-first.
Uh, August, August.
August.
That was Halloween, wasn't it? I was looking at Elvis, sir, and I said Halloween. But August thirty-first, uh, what, a couple of weeks, and, uh, my show's six till ten, but come about five, mix and mingle, and we'll pay, uh, honor to, uh, all the veterans, especially those, uh, World War II vets. I think there's one or two passed since we were there last year. We had a wonderful time out there, and it was just really fantastic. Want y'all to come be a part of it, and let's thank our veterans for, uh, this country that we live in, and that's American Legion Post one-thirty-seven. Thank y'all.
John, thank you very much. They had one about three weeks ago, it's been four weeks now with the nursing home.
Nursing home, fantastic.
It was, they had a really good, had a, there's probably a couple, three hundred people over there, wasn't in the rain.
They didn't pour the rain.
They poured the rain. And so, and I asked John, I said, what are we going to do?